So we presented the presidency above the locations of all the items to be discussed. All the order at six o'clock. Indication.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us this day and every day, Lord. We ask you, Lord, especially during this Lenten and soon Passover season, that we be mindful always, Lord, of you and to walk with you and to make good decisions for the citizens and the guests of our community to put tonight, Lord, in their business that will affect all of them. Help us, Lord, to walk and be and make decisions in your grace. For us, our brothers and those who need you most, for something.
Amen. One nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty that is for all.
One, I pledge allegiance to thee, my friends, one for thee, under God, one.
Here.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Paul?
Here.
Councilmember Dan Paul?
Yeah.
Councilmember Brian?
Here.
Councilmember Dago Bale? Mayor Carter?
Here. One's name is Brian, and he's got his script, and he's got his two.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Mike? Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Dan Paul?
Yes.
Councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yeah.
Open forum. At this time, you guys will have three minutes to address the count on the topic. We'll be there as fast as we can. Make three items. You must identify themselves for speaking. And the speaker requests for him to visit the city's secretary for hours. I have one. We want that one.
Hi, everybody. My name is Gerald Howard, and I reside at the University of New Haven, New Jersey. And I'd just like to say that, uh, as far as the Friends of the Library is concerned, we're very happy and gracious that the city allowed us to have this post dysfunction. It was a complete success. It was so much fun. And, um, you know, we raised money on behalf of the Friends of the Library, but our initiative was to upgrade the furniture for the kids' section as a start to hopefully one day, you know, acquire those grants that the city is going out for currently. And I just wanted to say thank you as a citizen of New York City for allowing us to host this function.
You have a branch group, George. We've been, uh, multiple sections before, too. Ready?
So, uh, in your packet, you'll have the first page that is the, um, thing for you. Um, for books right now is. The second page is, uh, version of the next chapter, um, still to break today, December 31st. We are at eighty-eight percent collected for our property tax revenue. This time last year, we were about ninety-one percent, so we're a little lower, but it was a lot. Appeals and protections. It's normal. Things like that. We're a little, a little more behind than we were actually last year, but we're still tracking this fine. Revenue overall, we're actually ahead of what we were at last year for total revenues. We're at seventy-three point nine percent collected. This time last year, we only had thirty-nine percent collected. So overall, we're still ahead on the revenue collection for the running year. Um, as far as expenses go, uh, we are in month four. It's around thirty-three, thirty-four percent of expenses. And right now, we're at forty-four point four percent of our total expenses. So we are tracking to be unbounded without, uh, that is. Following items are the balance sheets, all of the different ones, and the check write.
I'm. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't want to mince considerations possible after approving all events. December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, that would be, uh, and, um, if I move in a table, uh, like tables will then be. Motion made by Mayor Carter, granted by Councilman Tolan to the table. I have one.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
So.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Dan Paul?
Yes.
Councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
There is not a possible action on bringing in or, uh, twenty twenty-four dash oh one, adopting a budget amendment, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, this for, uh, ready.
So before you see this, twenty, or this might be for, uh, oh one. So this, uh, is for you for a budget amendment, but we didn't approve the budget, and we had out ten deals for the people that, um, the council approved and be prior to your budget. So this ordinance bringing forward that deal, which is attached to the ordinance for reference. And, um, we have gotten word from the leadership that we should be finally getting the technical thing. Anytime now, which. I don't know if we have anything, anything more than is coming in anytime now. So we wanted to make sure that this money was brought forward. It properly had the, the check. So, uh, this is, uh, just something to you for the first three, and if you have any questions about it, so.
Not taking a bunch of amendments, or just wanting to purchase up.
Motion made by Councilman Tolan, saving by Councilman Doctor, uh, Mayor to approve twenty twenty-four oh one.
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Dan Paul?
Yes.
Councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. I think we're fixing parts while I can. Notice, uh, received, uh, while it's part, while it's small days.
When I read the, the town and the council that, uh, as you can, uh, track the board, uh, park and wildlife, like, uh, small community, local park thing. That I'm pretty sure, uh, but it does have, uh, you just get the town, but, uh, have already, but it's, uh. So, um, there's a little packet in your, uh, the little packet in your packet that gives a little bit about the range for the type of park and wildlife. Like, there were twenty-eight small community applications throughout the state. Sixteen of them were funded. Uh, the fund of issue was not only approved, but we were ranked number one by nine. So the, uh, the, and kind of that, uh, seventy-three points, and we were up to two. So we did extremely well in our. I, I give everyone, uh, on the table, uh, packet for everything that they live there. I just give you a little for buying, right? I mean, I'm a. Um, so, uh, it shows that we were, like I said, we, we were, uh, we were at nine points for the one improvement. The, the next page, it is kind of small, but it's such a side concept that was approved for the, um, the grant. You'll see the soccer field improvement, the musical playground improvement, the picnic areas. The price breakdown is also there, and, um, it comes up to the three hundred thousand, which is a hundred fifty per month, and a hundred fifty from the Texas Park Wildlife. And then also the new fitness equipment, and we could go forth. The following is the side concept, the, what we just sort of turned at, they knew. And, um, last night, we presented that we had a application to pay the grant writer to apply for the, uh, ballot back, like, if you don't need to grant, and you know, the five hundred thousand. There is no local match to that grant. We use this five hundred thousand. And so grants typically follow, uh, you know, or each part of the Texas Park and Wildlife, um, awards. You have a very good shot considering how it's hired, you're right, in the Texas Park. Wildlife, um, grant applications. And this side concept breaks down, um, more of what we would like to do during state two, but you're looking for more playground to get, put in it, more signage, more covered. Uh, being over the picnic areas and, um, the, the black pad, that does keep the black side of the movement clearly over. Um, and it's like the first wildlife, we have to be dying for the environment, so we have to have it only through the. So this is what this money is going to get. And the last page is, um, some examples of some. Some musical, universal design, um, equipment, uh, there's, uh, specific equipment for exercise, the old, the drinking bottles, the, uh, pet bull water fountain. And then, of course, the input to the, to the soccer field and moving the theme and path of, uh, uh, Mormon athletics, soccer field. So.
No, this will all be under the content of the law.
I would like to see, and I know I've said this since I first got, uh, got into this position here, a small, and I know people are have their opinions on this venture, but a small little piece for the dog. You know, I've said it before, you know, it's important because we have a lot of dogs going into the community, and there are very little dog, there is no dog park for the dogs, which is something else. And when I went to New York City, like, every little, little cranny, there's a little spot for dogs under all this. And, and Manhattan is like this. You know, we have this small area over here to the side. I know that we can fit the soccer field here and then put a little piece just for the dogs. I know, okay, see, we can try to redesign that. I know that the dog courses started their little, you know, meetups I saw next door, and I thought that was pretty cool. They started that for the dog walkers and stuff. But having a facility, you know, to, to allow for the dog to run and play safely would be something that's important. I can see this little picture here. I think we can do it. It would probably have to be in the second.
Yeah.
And then I can see grass.
Yeah. When, uh, when these will bring that over in April to, uh, that one. So if that's me, uh, then, um, when. I mean, I'll, I'll tell Patty that should be incorporated in their best list.
Can we utilize the lot next door?
That would be great.
So.
I know we talked about the lot across being overflow and stuff like that, but.
Probably.
Half of it. I know it's by the street, but.
You really have to get it in some return to, like, cost and criticize by, if you get, by the layout of the.
Of the back of the corner?
Of this one, or of the one across the street, and, um, and that we guys can decide this and, and, um, had a next one if you want.
Ways can wait for this.
Yeah.
All right.
I guess, uh.
Together, or let's just. Okay. Mayor. I'd like to add a word to that. But I, I like that idea. I have dogs. Love to play with dogs. I, I just want to make sure that when we, when we do our due diligence on this project, that we look at the, um, liabilities. I know a lot of cities, as Howard has said, Manhattan, lots of other big cities, other small cities, have done this effectively. I just would want to make sure that we don't, you know, set ourselves up for any kind of situation occurrence should happen with dogs, maybe you don't deserve it, whatever. I don't, I've never put it, I don't know. I've never done it, but I think it's important that we look at that aspect as well going forward. If you need any help.
Um. When we did the park here, we recycled everything, sports park over there, and it worked for ten years, you know, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll come to the space where I can some, some type of bank.
I have one thing about the citizens. We have over two hundred people. Do the, uh, do, do the survey, which helped drive this whole thing to show like what our citizens really want. Item seven, additional improvement. This is, this is, I collect, uh, this is twenty twenty-three oh one, ordering general collection for the May for twenty twenty-four, places four, five, six, and levels.
Now, um, yeah, Mayor, yeah, and, and we, uh, typically do for an election season. Uh, here's the resolution by which the town council ordered the election, uh, general election for May, uniform election in May, for the three places that are this year. Uh, the resolution also, as, as beauty does, encompasses, uh, France, the, uh, so, uh, to enter into the county's election services. Uh, the contract is, I, I review the contract. It's the same one they figure us, uh, every, every season, which does, uh, uh, provide that if we are required, and for the election, uh, we, we won't owe them any money, uh, beyond whatever they, of course, already, which at this stage is probably not the goal. Uh, so, uh, and, uh, again, uh, we will, uh, we will know whether state law requires us to cast the election after the next Tuesday, because then Friday will be the deadline by which, uh, anybody interested in having their interest felt, that is required of us, and then us the next two days, then we'll, then we're going to write mechanics. Once those two things go by, uh, the city secretary will determine whether there's a position on the election. If there is none, state law requires us to cast the election. So we'll be able to do that with plenty of time to let the county know that we won't be needing their services. But if we do, then this resolution law allows the city to enter into that.
Very good. And I just want to, want to know that the, the cost of the election is sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. So.
Significant.
Gone up quite a bit. Even expensive a lot.
Yeah.
So.
Second.
Two presentation, twenty-three dash oh one, ordering for election for president. Doctor?
I, I will second, but I saw, I think, okay. He said, he said it already. I won't do anything except just find out that, uh, I think that the, the wording is, uh, the, um, the one point slash.
So.
Right.
I.
Yeah.
The motion to, next one is forty-four, what? Is that two, please?
I got one also.
Okay. At least there's that. Okay, the motion made by Councilman Gonzalez, seconded by Councilman for Howard to approve resolution twenty twenty-four oh one.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Dago Bale? Sorry. Councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Item six. To be the CDC, I move to, uh, with this after we go into the second.
Second.
Hey, Councilmember Mayor, motion made by the Mayor Carter, seconded by Councilman Tolan, to, uh, move, to be the, uh, PDC to activate.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard? Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yeah.
Councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Yes. Does everyone say it, Tom? Item seven. Additional use for, Confederation of the Black Lives, if we can do, usually, additional use for stripes.
So we are here to, uh, the, and the, and, uh, to, yeah. Well, you told me, and we, so they can be, so they can be, why they talk to that, right? And so this is standing before the town council, so I just. That's, that's to be remaining, cancel, but.
You can have a table.
Uh, I have just, I think, I'm just trying to share.
But it might take a day to get pulled, by the way.
You have any questions? Done.
Motion to approve condition for use permit for stripes.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember, uh, seconded by Councilman Tolan to approve the conditional use permit for stripes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. We want to get their, uh, margarita.
We are gonna have a date, and we are gonna get.
All of them.
Yeah, okay.
Well, over twenty. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Item A, primary care clinic advisory report. Considerations possible, actually create a primary care clinic advisory report. Okay, so. The people, I love the way you, you know. A lot of the, you know. What they, she sends down, if they think of primary care clinic, and their needs, and wants are for our communities. And, um, maybe we are. And. There's a little history on this. There's been a lot of intentions in our community about this. And, uh, I'm not really sure why. But it is what it is. But, um, we did this for five years. We spent a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Not us, but the CDC who's in charge of this, because we have no say over how the CDC spends their money. You can only approve that they want to spend their money. And, uh, it was five years, and at the end of the day, UTRGB didn't want to stay. I went to a couple of meetings with them. They said they lost a few hundred, you see, two hundred and eight thousand dollars. Last year, if you reply, they lost two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, according to them, which is all documented, that they had a daily rate of about eight patients. That, like, you know, if you went there, two hundred and sixty days of operation, two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine visits, about eight people per day. Even if you were to go down to a teacher who works a hundred and eighty-seven days, that's eleven. So obviously, they were having some issues, uh, getting people there. In the between the CDC and UTRGB, going back and forth in the last year, trying to renegotiate their contracts, the, uh, you know, we offered, not we, but the CDC offered what we were going to give them for, actually up to a little bit to thirty-six thousand dollars. And then they came back and won a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for one. And so they went back and forth for a while. And they came back to a agreement for thirty-six thousand dollars. You know, took a few months to get there. But UTRGB decided. And, you know, that's our advice. So hopefully, with what we're doing here, we can have a community come together and we're just, uh, a pushing, add a bike one. So if you guys want to do this, uh, and I think that we should set the rules the way that we set up the, uh, the ethics committee, when we set that us, after we pass the, uh, city charter, to where each one of us is to choose one member. Okay, so we'll, uh, open the advisory board, accept applications starting tomorrow. And then in the next meeting, pull that to the board. And then, to work out. Question? Your head?
I, I know it's not in our package, so when I ask this question, I, I know that we don't have it, but it'll be important that we have the mission and charter statement for this advisory board. I mean, if it's just a half page long, so that we understand and the citizens who serve on it understand what their roles and responsibilities are and what they're limited to. I think that'll be important.
Okay, so do, do you, do you think that we should appoint one of us? Kind of like that we do with, with the CDC.
Off the top of my head, I think it would be important for one of us to be a member, whether, whether they're the leader or not. I don't have to think about that, but I do think that's important. I would like to also see Mr. Do Not present, whether it's in the beginning stages or for the beginning, to be able to advise us more on the realities of hands and tenots that we're in.
One, one thing I can offer in that, that direction is that, uh, there would be no prohibition on any member of this council serving on that, on that board. And, and in any, the only, the only rule that would apply is if there were going to be either a quorum of this body on that board or less than a quorum of the body on that board with attendance by other members of the council, then those meetings would be subject to. Otherwise, it's merely an advisory board. It doesn't have any, any authority to bind, bind towns, but, uh, could just make recommendations to the town council, which will then enact whatever it decides, uh, on matters of, of charter or statement. Uh, typically, those are, those are taken care of as the first order of business of the new, uh, the new bot, the newly formed body, once the members are appointed, once. However, if the, the council in directing composition of the body or commission of the body can create limits, circumscribe, uh, your areas, closing where there is inquiry on, uh, and so you can get ahead of their official adoption. Otherwise, they'll, that body will run a lot like this body does, where sort of parliamentary rules, they'll, they'll make motions and so, like, I think. But the, the, the extent of their authority will be to make recommendations. Well, uh, due to, to you, as, I mean, council, uh, we'll have, take votes.
So.
The weed.
Mission, although.
Yeah, let's, all of, to broaden up. We have something inviting more, we need to, this board. Just nervous, the guidelines. To service the guidelines, or how they do function. And you being having history working in other communities, uh, have you seen such an advisory board concerned care, by not care? And it's all, uh, we already have. Happened, yeah.
Well, we don't have anything presently, we just have the, the general idea that the scope of the. Study, yes, in fact, we do a lot of frequent of a, of a funding journey. And um, that's, that's a general. Uh, it's one in terms of other communities I've worked with, you know, I haven't dealt specifically with an advisory board, uh, that has that. Recruitment of a. Um. Because that, that's typically not a business concern, so this will be, this will be something, something of a priority. Uh, however, I mean, it'll. I've been involved in advising a lot of different. Subject that.
Well, this is involving recruit, once they recruit, they would have. They're just happy. If they're over.
Well, it'll, it'll operate for as long as it decides it can operate, and I would just, again, just kind of piggybacking on there's the histories there, this, this project started with the C D C as a, as a, as an economic development project. They, they, they had supply for it. Were operated, so he's never, remember the city, just remember the city operations. Doing a business that would take a life of. But we could put statute about this. And so that's the model we have. That is probable to be the, the basis for the incentive for the next. However, this, we had the needs of. Those are things that, that could be the basis of the nation, that we need to then give to the council and the councils, whether it's. Continue with that model, change that model, try something, this, it's all on the table. All gonna be part of the discussion, Ms. Howard.
In my opinion, as opposed to your recommendation of picking someone as far as like, from the community to be on this board, I would like to see applications, I know we're a little over crunch time, only because what if one of us doesn't have a pick? Then who?
That's, that's the next.
Oh, okay, but you're not saying does the.
This is a strategy to get from the first one, that we're.
Oh, because you had said about picking one person.
I'm gonna say we're gonna have a pool about the applicants.
Okay.
And then out of the pool of applicants, in, in, instead of one person jumping in and firing off. I know, like, we're gonna have, you know.
I have an.
In, 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 instead of a fight, like, one person, but it's dominant, the meeting.
Okay.
We all gotta choose one person.
Oh, from the pool?
From the pool.
Ah, okay.
So it's more fair, like we do with the.
I, I know. Any other discussion with the.
Yeah, it's, it's just. That way, you know. The way to get, uh, an opportunity.
With an decision on the number of individuals?
Will be seven.
Seven. Um. I know that you have multiple meetings with U T R G B and those process. And I'm curious if, if during those conversations, uh, it was disclosed that any other town, city, municipality that's working, reporting. Their, their clinics in a way that the C D C or, or some other analogous in other towns, Howard. But the support they received from the town of Luminis was, were unique completely to our, to what we have here. The only other one that, that they have, which was interesting, because I asked what would it take for them to stay? They said they needed to pull back stuff. I said, what is that, what does that consist of? I'm, and Dr. Dean Patriarch said, I need two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And he said, actually, I don't even need two hundred and eighty thousand, I need, I need you to guarantee the coverage of all my losses. And so I asked, well, is there anybody else who does that? Well, there is one other person who does do that. SpaceX. And um, I was like, well, Elon can sneeze and he makes two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so uh. That's, that's where that. Um, and my understanding that our clinic is not the only one that was, was, almost around.
They, they closed another one in Brown.
Let's see.
Because uh, I talked to somebody else at U T R G B and they went to the biannual budgeting meetings up in. Austin, and the, the uh. The congressional people told them that they cannot operate at a loss. And they have to close wherever's making, whoever's not making any money. So. I can't even make any money for any. So. Do you have a motion?
Motion. Consider the act or. Create a primary care clinic advisory.
Second.
First, they were a council, the next, if they have council, Dr. Howard, to do for the primary clinic advisory board.
Councilmember Dowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yeah. Item nine, primary care clinic advisory board has patients, consideration possible action, this primary care clinic advisory board is activated. This is approved, that we're not, we have that.
Yes, that, that.
Yeah, and they will be available tomorrow. Also, we all, we don't know. If they'll, if they'll be online and at the mall, by tomorrow.
I know this is a very sensitive subject, I know it's in the. System or, uh, trying to fill this board, I would like to see a deadline onto this, and also if we will consider a special leading to. This board so they can start working. That's me.
See, it's. I mean, it's. I didn't give them all, but. Get it on.
To your point there, it does take a little bit of time. Now, it's.
You can see that.
You don't want anyone to feel like, they didn't find out about it, they didn't know about it.
We're not gonna make any special. Uh, stuff that we normally wouldn't do, and what we do for every other advisory board, so.
Randy, when does your next newsletter go out to the community?
The twenty.
So.
Not to think this, um, applied by.
Then by our next.
Yes.
So do you want a deadline that they have extended and. Review it?
Right.
If the.
Hold on a second. Here, Cindy, can I do board application?
Councilmember Dowell?
Yes.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Item seven, that's what that defined. Question about the last, you are. If we define, and uh, it, Randy.
So, um, I wanted to advance already, it's gonna have to turn this, as I can't print the, the website design, but um, you're looking at, uh, what is, when I would say three quarters of the way, um, down for the new design. And let's just scroll down. So the pictures are still stock, everything was a change, um, this is just a big one. This will be the homepage. On the homepage, we're going to have a section where if somebody wants to come and view the hot property, it is within Vista State, it's within Vista, it'll search all of our properties that are registered with us. And um, so that will be a search engine there. Um, right there should be all of the easy access documents that, um, sort of everyday documents, the, the one edit I've already given them is the easy to be. Um, that's in the other, it's, it's in another place, but we're gonna add it there as well. Um, and then this is where we're going to, uh. Advertise or, you know, display each of our areas. Um, that we have, of course, our hiking, the parks, um, the access. And then. Go down, and that'll be all the different departments. So. And then our current directory and our contact list. And then at the bottom, the, the same directory is at the bottom, is at the top, um, and any of those that will obviously working now, if hardly click on them, we'll talk, you can see chat. So again, that's where you stand. Alright. Oh, um, so this is where the, um, people will be able to come and again, pay there, if, if they are a, a short term rental owner, they'll be able to register, um, get their permit, contact us. And, or again, the, the link to search in, if somebody wants to stay in the Vista Vista, uh, and search our properties that are registered with us, but that will be hopefully another incentive for short term rentals to get registered with us, because we're gonna try to help, um. Obviously advertise, and you have that opportunity to be able to stay in the Vista Vista, so, um, I'll pull that up too. And uh, so then, uh, all the compartment, the front department. I mean, I'm sorry, governmental forms, go to the governmental parts, so this is where we're going to have. To the right. Okay, so, so there'll be a link there, there are links with, um, the, any, any forms that are active, for building applications, or for advisory. These are the forms that we have, information request form, that we, uh, uh, a button for, uh, fillable forms. So if, uh. So if there's any questions or. Addition, something you're seeing that I'm making.
Maybe. I guess, just a lot of C D C, is there gonna be like a calendar?
Um, we have that on the last, but we can add that, I, I don't think it's on this one as of right now, um. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think we have it on there, but you can, you can put anything on there.
Randy, who is assigned to update the website?
So, um, it's right now the, the myself and Carla and the office are the ones that know how to do it, so there's only two that, that know how not to, I mean, those, we, Carla and I are the ones that do it. So, uh, when we post on the website, uh, the agenda and things like that, she does that, work for me and try to help her sure how to do that, and, um, you know, get her more comfortable with website design. And, uh, so those are the matter of routine, or just that any content changes, if a business calls and wants to be added, that post, I mean, uh, so. Well, I think she posts, it's just, uh, the agenda, seven minutes, uh, day after a meeting, she goes in and posts that approved a minute and, uh, leads to the meeting, yeah.
So, so when will this be ready to go?
The, the goal is right now, we still have to schedule, that's on later on, that again, we need to schedule three final pictures for retakes for the council, and, uh, there's some council members that did their, first, see it, uh, when we did the headshots, to version opening that. And they're starting to move over content, and so that will take a little bit, so I'm springing into what my, my goal is, and the E is what the deadline is, but they're waiting for this final, uh, that's if they, those calls are in the advanced stages right now. So once we approve all the buttons and things like that, then they can start moving over and see where they belong as far as actual content goes. So I, I feel like it'll go quickly now, I don't, I don't wanna stay as far as, but that's my, my internal goal is, is by March, I wanna have a great, great summer.
I, I think it's important that we get to start, we've talked about it for a long time, I know you worked really hard on it, and many more pending some pictures, there's some content that's certainly handy added.
I know.
Plus, we have the election coming up, and we have an agent, that's, we don't, but we, we don't wait for it. It was, this is the base of our community, right, so. Yes. Or maybe that's.
That's, yeah, if I, if I have everyone's, um, go ahead on, on the layout, then we will. They got this into its mission today, um, so I wanted to feel free, quite, so. Thank you, guys.
The, the logo for the, that's not the current one.
Right, no, that was one that they had told, it will, it will get put to our current. One of the.
Looks like that is like all, all the N and the I.
They're trying to, I think it was trying to.
I don't think she changed.
Did Randy, she done half, she saw that right.
I know, and I will be.
Any other questions? Item eleven, town music creation program holiday project, consideration possible action, the recommendations, the C D C's, the project, the sound music creation program, holiday content, or Randy?
So this, uh, I was getting someone for the community film presentation, and they approved it last night, it posted for the. They, they have a couple of hearing, this application is a thirty, uh, thirty five thousand dollars to be spent throughout the course of the year, because the, uh, will be spent on fireworks programs, and your holiday decorations that will allow for this, any, uh, that is found with the creation project. Basically, we're trying to combine for the P D C, and the Israel project that P D C typically undertook, we just combined the mention one application, but that would be, we don't have to pay for multiple newspaper publications and come back. So we're grouping it into one lump sum, so the, the P D C board approved it last night, thirty days in front of the board, um.
Have a budget for each event? Many families have a budget?
Um, no, the, the fireworks is always, they, they support half of the, the fireworks, and so that number is, um, part of that, and then from there, I. You can have your breakdown of what I'm spending the, the money on, on decorations, how to tie this up. It's not a, it's not a blank ticket for me to go spend thirty six thousand, just to avoid us having to do the, uh, posting each time, so they've approved the funds, but they haven't approved the, the purchase. When I look at Christmas decorations last year, I took what we, what spent last year, um, and in the S D, used the half of what we did for the fireworks, and, um, then I added, there's some decorations that, uh, I wanted them to consider for the music station, and so that's where the numbers, because I think we spent around twenty thousand in the holiday decorations last year. Um, that's what I'm bringing, plus the ten thousand for, um, the fireworks show, and then a five thousand for, um, maybe an everyday, uh, decoration.
What's gonna happen to the budget, about the new re-coverage budget for decorations, all that stuff, because there's.
Well, those decorations are for like the events, these are for like the big decorations that go out front, like the big, to add to our like big huge town decorations, the, the general fund budget, those decorations and the events, especially, that's what we use for like the events that we have at the park.
But this is to add to the, the, the overall project, starting this year to improve our overall big holiday decorations, things, things that are some costs that we'll continue to use year after year.
Yeah.
Thank you. Right.
Mr. Ozina, this thing can apply for. This type of. Assistant?
Yes, it, it falls under the statutes that govern this quality of life type. That, that might be corporation, particularly in type of, for, Cameron County, uh, and. Rules are different for other counties, it has to do with a formula that, that's of the, the relative, uh, moment, uh, so we, we, we need the, the most permissive of.
I don't wanna be too. Micromanager on things. But twenty five thousand, say the fireworks is ten thousand, you can turn around ten, twelve thousand, say twenty five thousand's gonna go to. Decorations that are what we call the capital outlet kind of decorations. Can we, can you bring that to us before you purchase? Um, I meant to say that I was extremely fond of the bulbs, they're cute, but I was like, there's no light, it's not lit, you had to put, I mean, there was. there's no light, it's not lit, you had to put, I mean, it wasn't functional for me only in daytime. It was nice, it was a good added, you know, to the Christmas decorations, but to me, I think that, I don't know, the aesthetics and things in particular, because, you know, I wanna make sure that we all, I don't wanna like micromanage that part, but just saying if you could bring it to us before we purchase so that we can at least say like yay or nay or options. The twenty-five thousand with decoration does a lot.
Absolutely. That's the reason we're doing this now, we have time, because they're, they're already messaging me and saying, where's your order for Christmas? So it's okay, yeah, and you want us to order another green. So this will allow me the ability to come forward with putting that project together and show me guys whatever, I have no problem. But that is what helps me do that, because I knew early, because last year we were kind of under the mask for time and so.
The rights to retrieve the town education program and holiday projects.
Tom from Fort Romero?
Yes.
Tom from the Howard?
Yeah.
Tom from the Collet?
Yes.
Tom from the Ganso?
Yes.
Tom from the Brian?
Yes.
Mary.
Yes. Number twelve, racial profiling court consideration, racial profiling. He there?
Yes, this one asks, racial profiling court state is to be filed by Marsha to have it involved and accepted by the state.
Thank you for letting me do, sir.
Anything interesting on the reports?
Uh, we have low crime and we're, it's assault, it's, uh, how many people we arrested for this, our Godzilla that is our DCR, your primary forty, is low compared to others, so people look on, on the, say, but I just find it, hey, I'll let them live here. Stuff like that. It's a pretty, we're not a guy in the house.
We all agree, yes. Oh, you have more?
Yeah.
Oh, you're saying?
I know you're not used to it.
Continuing possible actions authorized to be, 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 to be. That's one, you get more steps.
The process of the grant is continuation of the grant again, just facing very dear flip up. And as we work this grant, it's enhanced through some of the ground, sharing with our private agency, FBI, FSB, anything we did, we report to them, state, foreign operations, and everything that's there. And we score an eight, so we're still right there, going strong. And so it's still due and I already wrote the grant, I just wanted to put a resume to up.
We'll be by county member Dr. Perrin, second by county member Don Bellis, with the resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh two.
Tom from the, from there, Tom from the Alex?
Yes.
Tom from the Paul?
Yes.
Tom from the Bimba?
Yes.
Tom from the Brian?
Yes. Item fourteen, resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh three, consideration of possible actions authorized, it's gonna be submitted to the county, we won't be seven one zero nine, operation cell guard program.
Yes, this is the same operation that we've been doing years too, several years. On this one, we don't know exactly how much money we'll get, you never know until Congress says, you know, what you're gonna get, and they're still working on it. But we've been part of this and we've been benefit, benefited us with the actually purchase of patrol unit, what BD is all aware of, and had a media lecture and it worked out really great where we don't have to respond to the, to the river and lawsuits and the city abandoned, but we do go to the, the bridge here, I can't think of the name by now, well, forty-eight, and they get, you know, launcher, those, and SCS, and everything else coming up. And anyways, that's our agreement, we go pick up the stuff and pick up the peoples, and that's what we do. And it's been, this patchwork worked out really great, so let's say part of that.
Three.
Three.
Oh, three.
Three.
One second.
Three.
Tom from the Mary?
Yes.
Tom from the Howard?
Yes.
Tom from the Collet?
Yes.
Tom from the Brian?
Yes.
Mary.
Yes, I'm sorry, I started as I mentioned. Item fifteen, resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four, consideration of possible actions authorized, it's gonna be submitted to the police team to submit grant application number five five one six six zero one for the border zone priority.
We're gonna discuss this. Yeah, this is the new grant, it's really a, a grant for the border committees, border counties, it's, you know, Cameron, Zadago, Starr, just within each county north of that. And one of the deals is, like I said, you all saw the news about, about this grant, is now they're gonna ask for locals to assist, like if we have an issue at this point, and it's basically, the new in this program is awesome because it really qualifies us, we have people there, and a part, part of people to respond, to assist these people, you know, check them out, whatever the case may be. And the cool thing about this grant is it can be from, any equipment, from twenty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Everybody's asking everything all the way to the same level. But most of the stuff is, is fortunately, depending on what you ask for, like we're gonna ask for a backpack, seventeen, seventeen fifteen, whatever this, a new one, it's like forty-five thousand dollars, they're gonna purchase that for us, anything we're gonna use on, to assist, and now the bad deal is you can't buy a fire truck, you can't buy an.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, we can buy an all-new bumper gear, boots, everything, so, and I'm just, I haven't finished writing this grant, we're gonna put in all the capabilities and that we're able to do, which, which we're gonna be up there with everybody, so. And some, depending on what we get, I don't know what it is yet, I'm waiting for the data to send you. Most of it's non-reimbursable, reimbursable, the some of it is, we, they pay ninety percent, we end up paying ten percent. I don't know what that could be, I'm gonna ask for everything, so we'll see, but we don't know solidly for sure what that item is.
Have to be on some fun to view it, it's good that, and have the, and have the lifespan, that's not very long, so. Thank you, bud. Thank you, motion based by county member Dr. Perrin, second by county member Don Bellis, with the resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four.
Tom from the Mary?
Yes.
Tom from the Alex?
Yes.
Tom from the Paul?
Yes.
Tom from the Alex?
Yeah. Item sixteen, consideration of possible actions, travel, more for both staff, probably.
De la Peña.
For, uh.
De la Peña.
Uh, I know, Texas, 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 Texas,
The second page talks about the resident community program. And I thought it'd be important that you have that. And the reason that I asked about other new cities companies here is because I thought that it begins with that, if I want to say something.
Yeah, they, they, they're in that.
In any case, this is the, the general land office of the civilian community program. And it's now available to the cities and counties affected by twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen flood and hurricane Harvey. There's no match for this program. And you can get as much as three hundred thousand dollars for this program. And, and what it does is that the administrator does a comprehensive plan for the city. And the plan must be forward looking and integrated with the hazard mitigation plan. If one exists, must identify local hazard risks and explain how it mitigates against this risk. The plan must include population study, housing study, land use study, plan, zoning coordinates, infrastructure study, and capital improvement. This, this type of program is very important for small communities like this because you can prepare to. To avoid things happening here if you plan ahead of time. And we have a very, very good planning departments. They'll come out here, they'll go through everything that we're talking about and, and prepare a plan for you to go for the military. It, it helps the community in the end from all these risks. So basically, it's, that's.
Where do you stand on that? Motion by Mayor Carter, second, thank you for that request to approve business request for proposal. For the CBDG MIT community program, grant program administered to.
What's?
Councilmember Collette?
Yes.
Councilmember Inglewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Five five one point three eight seven liberation very possible development. Five five same things there for the liberation very.
Any turn.
And six.
For you, example, if you suppose to agree that the CDC, you took last night, spent ten thousand dollars to secure the building process reformally. That held the mental, so this would secure the rent of that, of that. Unit base for the month of January, February, March, and April, if the, what was done last night and it's right.
I'd like to make a comment about this before. I'm a, I'm a board certified internal medicine physician, practicing in this area of. And, and I also have been a long time order of UTRGB. And for that, I'm, I'm on their faculty. I'm a, I'm a voluntary faculty with UTRG, I've been teaching. For, for quite a while. I do it because I believe in the institution and I believe that everybody needs to develop on medical down here. And not to be franked notions, but I've been awarded at the penic position of the year by the medical students. By the residents and. And I, I do it without pay because it's important that we have access to care during. Unchallenged for a long, long time. That being said, I. I don't think that the clinic was operating out of the pattern. That is consistent with what all the other primary care clinics in our area had been doing. The bond that they were seeing was not on par with any other fact that I am aware of in our areas and saying that's the thing sustains the fact. And, and that, that made me very bad position for me to say here publicly. As I am both on faculty there, but I, I think it was my, my senior application to say that it's for, for our town here. I don't know of any physician in South Texas that you get by will see eight patients a day. That's usually half the morning. And. That we do need care in our community, but. The way that it was run or by UTRGB, I don't think was any reflection upon the support that it was received from this, this town. Which was above and beyond any other town. And, and was, was really exceptional. And I, and I voted to support the clinic when I was on the TDC. And I think we will speak about what they had come to this town and asked of us. And now this is me as, as a volunteer faculty member of UTRG saying tonight. What they came to us and asked of us, I think is somewhat insulting. And set it forward for us. Not only for the clinic, but in all honesty, for any business in our town. That does not operate in a sustainable fashion. And, and I can, I'm concerned about the present that we've set by trying to subsidize a failing practice. That being said, I, I do realize that the property owner who has been leasing the space to the clinic is, that is of no fault of his own. And he has continued to work with the city to try and secure space for, for a practice in this area. And I recognize that, that this is been a given from January to April and we're current. I've spoken with many in my colleagues that volunteered many hours trying to, trying to find somebody that I know personally, that I've worked with for a long time. Deep relationships with that, that would come in and open this practice and take over this, this location. But in all honesty, we are all spread so thin. The availability of clinicians in our community to be able to, to, to run this, this clinic here is one of the issues. And, and that will be an ongoing issue beyond the, the months of April or however long as they try to subsidize an empty space. The residency program that generated the largest number of primary care physicians in our area is closing down. At the end of this year. The family practice program is a legacy residence program. And valid that center shuttered. We are hopefully going to have a place of residency programs coming into the area. But there are a number of physicians that are either away or retired recently in our community. And those of us that are still practicing down. Are actually more and more, and more, cover more and more. And that need and that burden is tremendous. And to think that we have, have a site that's gonna just try and get by. And I think that it's. Until the end of university, trying to get our taxpayers to pay that kind of money. To, to keep them in operation, the level of support that universities. And with the need for providers that you go to any primary care brackets in the area and you gotta spend hours waiting to receive. And, and we have a cluster that's. Getting relatively used. Anybody else have anything to say?
I know it's very. It's very hard to get. TDC to find economic development for the criteria is very specific. No, and it doesn't sit well with me personally. To just know that ten thousand dollars swiped to the air in hopes to find somebody to replace UTRGD. However. With this, I advise you to board. Get the job done. And I wish the job, I wish them well. We won't help you in any way, but ten thousand dollars. Of your R tax, tax base going into a hope that we're gonna replace UTRD or replace the care there. To me, that doesn't sit well because I know how that CDC runs that. But we are gonna hold our end of the agreement for sure because it's important. So I'll make a motion to consider. The incentive agreement between the CDC and Six Corche LLC. For the four months into the end of April.
Your proposal by Councilmember Powell, I think, but Councilmember Dr. Perron to approve. The economic development sentence you will be the six quarter jet.
Councilmember Inglewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Collette?
No.
Councilmember Inglewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
He's like our gentleman.
Yes.
I'll start with our, we met with the. I met with our project manager on Monday, Friday, Tuesday night for educating the ARPA regulations. The commission was. Not always for that, vendors have to be bad to be things covered. So they will have to fill out some other types of paperwork, like you took those bits back out for the library computers in the library. Those were the ones we're running, public finding vendors that could do the work that met the policy. Those that have to be back to us on September fifteenth, we still had a lot of new shit, but we're, we're hopeful that they're running up the fifteenth. So I'll give a price on that one. The e-force is scheduled to be the. From the federal service to the cloud, this way the police can use their topless that have come in that was purchased with ARPA and they can access them in a patrol unit. The last thing that's pending are not the last thing, but for, for this update right now is the LVRA. Contacted the LVRAs and she let them know the timeline for our funds that we have to set the user come out. Right now we have to buy items for the remaining ARPA bus for the area project. But we're gonna have to sort of start tailoring this down soon. They are in the middle of getting their feasibility study completed. And we're hoping to, I, Mr. Mosby and Mr. Dussis will hopefully be able to come give us more specifics in March about a disagreement I need. Like to make that decision so we can get all the funds allocated. And that project is, is to play the nice to go forward with that, you know, construction project, some molders who actually explore and do. And we're, you know, we have two years for ARPA, but that's not very long when you're talking about procurement and, and it has to be. So.
How, how long it takes me to do?
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, it, it's federal money, so it takes a lot of. Time to get through to do this. So we just wanna, we don't wanna wait too long. So, so they'll be here hopefully March at the feasibility study. And then they, you know, and, and with make them decisions and we'll have enough to do by the weekend. The GLO drainage grant, we are still in the pre-document stage. Our initial project, starter documents were approved. The design and environmental, we'll take, oh, I'm sorry. The engineers have started the survey and what's the surveying, it's about thirty percent complete. They'll give that to the environmental department of that work and they'll start reviewing that. They're trying to do GLO, the environmental reviews alongside the survey. So there's not such a long delay in between when the survey is done or when the environment view gets done. And so once that's completed, we'll move forward with getting the bits for the contractors. So we're looking, we're probably still looking, you know, late summer or early fall before we reach shovel to the dirt on, on this project. But it is being worked on and the, the, we start monthly meetings with the GLO on the status of the ground project. So I'll have that. And I've already agreed on the Texas Park Wildlife and the USDA grant that we're trying to get for the library. They have not opened yet. We were led to, the understanding was that they would be opening in February as of now they haven't opened yet. But we are looking at receiving public input, style of sharing with you, speaking the, the library survey that got out. We're already at a hundred and thirty three responses at the time when I vote this, it might be a little more. So, so we're receiving good public input and by the, when I close this survey, I'll go report back to you in March with the result of this survey will be. I'd like to thank the town of Bayview, Ellen's Gate, Port of the Bell School Librarians. And I'm not sure if Port of the Bell actually, you know, actually posted anywhere, but I did post it, she doesn't have to, 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 but I do know Bayview actually. I know that Ellen did, and we know that some of the school library team after we're put it about. So I just wanna thank them for helping us get our. Our town marketing newsletter was going, we're about sixty one percent open rate so much. And have the, the department resource. And the police has new to report. We welcome the officer on board, Daniel Holland, started his. So we welcome him. Around town. And so the, the last thing that I wanted to remind everyone is that we will be calling up on the stage Monday. So. And if anybody has any other specific questions about the. Councilmember now?
Yes.
Councilmember Inglewood?
Yeah.